Hello, this is Joe Pearson, the project planner for this application. This, this presentation is for the freeway adjacent digital display billboards ordinance project followed by the city of Oxnard. Starting with the executive summary and a little bit of background, on January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, the planning commission recommended approval of the ordinance to permit freeway adjacent digital display billboards within the city of Oxnard to the city council. With various recommended amendments, which I will touch on later in this presentation. The request before council today only sets the minimum and maximum standards by which all future developments would be held to. Future development proposals would require a special use permit and development agreement subject to approval by both the planning mission and the city council. Staff continues to recommend the approval of the freeway adjacent digital display billboard ordinance as presented and recommended to the commission with the exception of reducing the number of potential billboards from five to four, which is in accordance with the two exclusive negotiating agreements that the city has entered into. Staff's recommendation continues to be based upon the authorization of the ENAs by city council, which identified potential billboard locations, compliance with state laws established by Caltrans, which is the agency responsible for regulating freeway safety, and consistency with applicable policies and regulations, as well as the results of the environmental review, which identified that all project impacts could be mitigated, mitigated to a level of less than significant. The proposed project includes a request for amendments to the Oxnard city code to permit freeway adjacent digital display billboards on parcels designated with a non-residential zoning within four hundred feet of US Highway one-on-one right-of-way within the city of Oxnard. The installation and operation of each individual electronic billboard would require the approval of a special use permit and development agreement. No freeway adjacent digital display billboards may be placed at a distance of less than one hundred feet from the property line of any residentially zoned parcel. All freeway adjacent digital display billboards would have a maximum sign face display area of fourteen feet in height by forty-eight feet in width, and would be required to be oriented to be primarily viewed from the adjacent freeway. The maximum height, as measured from the pavement level of the adjacent freeway, would be fifty-five feet to the bottom of the digital display or eighty feet to the top of the sign. Each freeway adjacent digital display billboard would be required to be separated from every other billboard by at least two thousand feet with a maximum of four allowed in the city. As previously mentioned, the city entered into, or the city council authorized the mayor to execute exclusive negotiation agreements or ENAs with Clear Channel Outdoor LLC and another with Outfront Foster Interstate LLC, both for potential digital, digital billboard sites. Under the terms of the ENAs, both companies were given the exclusive right to negotiate with the city for an initial six-month period and two additional six-month terms if the projects were being diligently pursued by the parties. The ENAs are currently on their, on the seventh amendment, which runs through June sixth, two thousand twenty-three, and it is important to note that in the sixth amendment, the city council removed the term "city-owned" from the areas to be considered for billboards for Clear Channel, but not for Outfront Foster Interstate. This change was requested by Clear Channel and approved by city council because there are few properties or right-of-ways within this highway corridor that comply with the California Department of Transportation laws and standards. Outfront Foster Interstate has already identified two proposed locations, both of which will be presented to the city council. To allow for these and other potential signs conflated under the two ENAs, the city is proceeding with the proposed project. The city currently allows for billboards in the form of off-site advertising signs in the general commercial, commercial manufacturing, limited manufacturing, light manufacturing, and heavy manufacturing zones pursuant to the Oxnard city code. Under the proposed ordinance, the freeway adjacent digital display billboards would be regulated separately from the other off-site advertising signs. The allowance of the freeway adjacent digital display billboards is much more limited as they would only be allowed within four hundred feet of US Highway one-on-one, and it's currently drafted only on city-owned property and rights-of-way. In addition to existing off-site advertising signs, the city has permitted two digital signs which are allowed by the River Park specific plan, which has the collection sign and the Rose Santa Clara specific plan, which has the Oxnard Auto Center sign. These signs are not defined as off-site advertising signs and are generally limited to the display of businesses located within the collection or the Oxnard Auto Center. Both were permitted under their respective specific plans, therefore no additional signage would be allowed without changes to the specific plans. Also, the, for reference, the collection sign is approximately one hundred and ten feet away from the closest residentially zoned property. Shown on the slide are images of these signs, as well as other billboards currently along the highway corridor. The signs are currently located on both private and public or county-owned property within the city. The installation and operation of individual electronic billboards will require the approval of a special use permit and development agreement, as previously noted. The specific limitations of the freeway adjacent digital display billboards are as follows. Freeway adjacent, freeway adjacent digital display billboards may only be erected on city-owned property or right-of-way in any non-residentially zoned areas located within four hundred feet of the freeway, and no more than four are allowed within the city. And again, as previously noted, the original Rosel included an allowance of up to five. However, this was reduced to four, which is consistent with the two council-approved exclusive negotiating agreements. Also, no freeway adjacent digital display billboards may be placed at a distance of less than one hundred feet from the property line of any residentially zoned parcel. The maximum height of any freeway adjacent digital display billboard shall not exceed fifty-five feet as measured from the pavement level of US Highway one-on-one to the bottom of the digital display or eighty feet to the top of the display. The maximum size of each freeway adjacent digital display billboard face display area shall not, shall be fourteen feet in height and forty-eight feet in width, and each billboard shall be separated from every other billboard by at least two thousand feet. Each freeway adjacent digital billboard must be oriented primarily for viewing from the adjacent freeway. All freeway adjacent digital display billboards shall comply with all applicable laws and regulations concerning brightness, including without limitation the California Building and Professions Code, the California Vehicle Code, as well as the Highway Beautification Act and the Outdoor Advertising Act and the regulations of the Oxnard City Code. Freeway adjacent digital display billboards may only show a series of still images, each displayed for at least eight seconds. The still images may not move or present the appearance of motion and may not use flashing or blinking lights or any other means not providing consistent illumination. Change in or blank screen time between one still image and the next may not exceed one second, and these are consistent with the state regulations. Before a freeway adjacent digital billboard may be installed within the city, again, the applicant must obtain a special use permit and enter into a statutory development agreement subject to approval by the planning commission and city council. In approving a development agreement for any freeway adjacent digital display billboard, the city council must find that the development agreement will confer substantial public benefit to the city and to the general public. Regarding the environmental review, an environmental consultant under the supervision of planning division staff prepared a initial study MND, which evaluated potential environmental impacts of the proposed project. The ISMND was prepared pursuant to the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA. The this prepared mitigated negative declaration was sent out for a thirty-day public review period as required under CEQA. The city received four public comment letters. The comments and responses have been included in the MND, and city staff made changes to the draft MND for the final MND based on the comments provided. The final ISMND includes a mitigation monitoring and reporting program which details the process to implement required mitigation measures, and after the implementation of conditions and mitigation measures, all potentially significant impacts would be reduced to less than significant levels. A little more detail on the results of the MND. The MND found that the implementation of the proposed project would result in potentially significant impacts associated with aesthetics due to lighting, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, and tribal cultural resources, and noise. Mitigation measures have been required to reduce each potentially significant impact to less than significant, compliance with state law and general plan goals and policies and implementation of the required mitigation measures within the draft MND would reduce potential significant impacts. These measures include regulating light trespass, including an operating mechanism for electronic billboard malfunctions or failures, conducting a third-party test for the installed electronic billboard, demonstrating that the electronic billboard would not exceed Ventura County Air Pollution Control District thresholds of significance, conducting a pre-construction survey for active bird nest, and conducting protocol-focused surveys for daily spells vario and monitoring and collecting if necessary any discovered historical, archaeological, paleontological, and tribal cultural resources. After the implementation of the required mitigation measures, the potential significant impacts would be reduced to less than significant, and no remaining significant impacts would occur. As previously mentioned, the proposed project went to the planning commission on January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. During that hearing, the commissioners asked a series of questions as a result of staff's presentation. Five public comment letters or emails were received prior to the meeting, and one verbal comment was provided during the public comment period on the ordinance. Following commission deliberation, a motion was made and seconded to modify the proposed ordinance as follows. To allow for billboards up to five hundred feet from the freeway instead of four hundred feet, increase or decrease the maximum number of billboards from five to three, increase the separation between the billboards from two thousand feet to two thousand five hundred feet, increase the setback from residentially zoned properties from one hundred feet to two hundred and fifty feet, and increase the minimum display time from eight seconds to twelve seconds. As shown, the the increase in the separation from residentially zoned properties causes the two currently proposed SUPs to be infeasible as they are currently one hundred and thirty and one hundred and sixty feet from adjacent residential. The concerns raised were generally in regards to the impacts on lighting, views, and traffic safety. Starting with the lighting impacts, concerns were raised by the commissioners and members of the public regarding lighting impacts on residential properties. As a result, the commission recommended increasing the minimum required setback from one hundred feet to two hundred and fifty feet. City staff and the city's CEQA consultant prepared the MND, which analyzed lighting impacts on any residential properties, including any residency zone properties in the city, both in the city of Oxnard as well as the county of Ventura. The MND found that subject to the proposed ordinance and the required mitigation measures, there would not be any significant lighting impacts based on the recommendations from the International Commission on Illuminants. Pursuant to the proposed ordinance and mitigation measures, the maximum allowable increase in illumination at any residentially zoned property would be point-five-foot candles. It is important to note that these signs are required to be oriented towards the freeway and include directionally-oriented movers to direct lighting towards the freeway. Given the directional nature of the signs and the requirements of the proposed ordinance and mitigation measures, the maximum illumination in the direction of any residentially zoned property is approximately point-two-foot candles at approximately a hundred feet, and this is based on lighting studies prepared. While the specific number at any residency zone property may vary, at no time may it exceed point-five-foot candles. This is also significantly below the city's adopted lighting requirements, which require projects to be illuminated to a level of one to seven-foot candles throughout a project site. This is also lower than the Therefore, any additional lighting generated by the billboard would be negligible. And lastly, the proposed hundred-foot setback is consistent with the city's previous approval of the collection electronic sign, which is approximately a hundred and ten feet away from residency zone properties. This is an example of the level of lighting study that would be required for each sign proposed under this ordinance. The diagram shows that these diagrams show the lighting that would be emitted from the billboard. This is a worst-case scenario that does not account for existing ambient lighting to give a clear impact of the illumination resulting from the billboard. As shown, these signs are primarily oriented towards the freeway, so lighting at the adjacent residential properties are minimal at less than point-two-foot candles. For reference, in this case, this is far below the illumination of the street separating the uses, which, which as a result of existing street lighting is at four to six-foot candles. Concerns were also raised by some of the commissioners regarding traffic safety. As the billboards are oriented to be viewed from the adjacent freeway, use from other adjacent streets would be minimal. However, as it relates to US Highway one-on-one, any billboards developed under the proposed ordinance are required to comply with all applicable laws and regulations concerning brightness, including without limitation the California Building and Professions Code, the California Vehicle Code. These regulations ensure that the signs are constructed, operated, and maintained in a manner that would not adversely affect the vision of drivers on the highway. Per the California Department of Transportation website for outdoor advertising, Caltrans regulates the placement of outdoor advertising displays visible from California highways. Caltrans performs regular reviews of freeways and highways identified on the national highway system to enforce outdoor advertising requirements under the Federal Highway Beautification Act and the State's Outdoor Advertising Act. Therefore, each sign constructed under the proposed ordinance would require a permit from Caltrans. With the inclusion of the state regulation in the ordinance and the requirement for a permit from Caltrans, each individual billboard would not substantially increase hazards to drivers along US Highway one-on-one, and less than significant impacts would occur. Also, Caltrans submitted a comment letter during the public review period for the MND for this, for this ordinance. They did not raise any concerns regarding the proposed ordinance as long as the individual signs obtained the appropriate local and state permits. A comment letter was also provided by the California Highway Patrol, which included statements claiming claiming that signs result in increased traffic collisions. However, the claims were unsupported. As Caltrans is the agency responsible for highway safety and allows for electronic billboards throughout the state, the city finds that subject to compliance with state and local regulations, there would not be any significant impacts related to traffic safety. Concerns were also raised by some of the commissioners regarding overall visual impacts, primarily related to the overall number of billboards, as well as the proximity of the billboards. As a result, the commission recommended that the maximum number of billboards be reduced from five to three and increase the minimum distance between the billboards from two thousand feet to two thousand five hundred feet. The ordinance would only allow the proposed billboards within the US Highway one-on-one corridor, which is generally, generally characterized by urban or high-density development, as well as other similar large-scale signage, such as the existing Auto Center collection and Espinault signs. In addition to these signs, there are numerous larger illuminated freeway signs, including electronic ones upon the corridor. The allowance of these new sign types would be consistent with the overall nature of the corridor. And lastly, there were questions regarding the measurement of the height. The height of signs are intentionally measured from the adjacent freeway grade. This form of measurement is used to ensure a consistent maximum height as viewed from the freeway due to portions of the freeway which are significantly above or below the adjacent grade. This method of measurement is consistent with other freeway-oriented billboard ordinances and will ensure a consistent, a consistent view of the signs as people travel along the highway, as well as ensure that all signs are being treated equally. Also, while the proposed ordinance would allow for up to four billboards as revised by staff, each billboard would be subject to approval by both the planning commission and city council. Therefore, while the proposed ordinance provides flexibility to allow for up to four, the city would not be obligated to allow for all four billboards should the decision-makers decide not to approve that number of signs. Also, the state regulations require that freeway-oriented billboards be separated by at least a thousand feet, and as originally drafted, the proposed ordinance required that any billboard be separated by at least two thousand feet to further reduce potential impacts. Aesthetic impacts, including impacts on views, were analyzed as part of the environmental analysis. The analysis determined that with the limit on the number of signs, the already increased separation requirement and the commercial nature of the existing corridor, the proposed ordinance would not have a significant visual impact. As previously mentioned, the ordinance only establishes the minimum separation requirements. As city staff, the planning commission, and city council review proposals for each sign, the city can require additional increased distance due to site-specific concerns. The proposed ordinance was discussed at a community workshop in association with two concurrent projects. Notifications of that workshop were mailed to all property owners within the River Park neighborhood. Approximately two thousand notices were mailed out for that community workshop. Eight members of the community attended this meeting and two spoke on the item. The video from the online workshop was also posted on the city's website for members of the public to view separately. The primary concern identified at the community workshop was related to the general allowance of electronic billboards and lighting impacts. Both aesthetics and lighting impacts were analyzed in the environmental document, and it was determined that with the implementation of the project mitigations, the impacts would be less than significant. There was also a request for additional site renderings showing the sign from the adjacent side of the freeway, which were prepared and attached to the specific project reports. Following the workshop, there were other notifications, activities for public comment. These included the CEQA notice, which was mailed to interested parties, agencies, and published in the newspaper. The January nineteenth planning commission meeting, which included publication in the newspaper. And for the city council hearing, it was again published in the newspaper. And also, each billboard developed under this ordinance would require noticing in accordance with city requirements, which would include a community workshop, notification of adjacent property owners, as well as any other noticing required under CEQA. notification of adjacent property owners, as well as any other noticing required under CEQA. In summary, at this public hearing, the city council had the option to move forward with option one, which would allow for the freeway adjacent digital display billboard ordinance as originally drafted with the reduction of the number of signs from five to four. And so it would allow for up to four freeway adjacent display billboards at least one hundred feet away from residentially zoned properties and at least two thousand feet away from every other away from other freeway adjacent display billboards in the billboard locations identified in the ENAs. Or the city council can approve the freeway adjacent digital display billboard ordinance as modified by the commission, which would allow for up to three freeway adjacent digital display billboards at least two hundred and fifty feet away from residentially zoned property parcels and at least two hundred and fifty feet away from any other freeway-oriented sign. This would, as previously noted, require Outfront Foster Interstate to identify out-fronted locations for their proposed signs.